I would like to welcome everyone to the February 11th, 2014, regular meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on channel 96 in Mentor and channel 22 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you. And first we'll have our approval of the minutes. Can we do these all at one time?
Yes.
Okay, we have January 14th, our organizational meeting, tax budget meeting, and our regular meeting.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
And our first hearing of the public on agenda items only. Thank you. Our superintendent's report and recommendation. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I am recommending approval of consent agenda items 5A1 through 5A5.
So moved.
Any questions, discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, the treasurer's office has once again earned a perfect audit from the Ohio Auditor of State. We are happy to recognize and thank the office staff who are here this evening for their continued commitment to excellence. Mr. Wilson, along with Ms. Jezzling, will make the presentation.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, thank you for the opportunity to honor our staff. As many of you know, I'm old and been around a long time, and this is my seventh district and fortieth year of doing this. I'm proud to say it's the first time we've had an office that's produced four perfect audits. To achieve a perfect audit, we have to have no citations and no management letter comments with recommendations for improvements. To contrast that with norms, a typical audit of any local government will have at least three citations saying something was contrary to state regulations but not severe enough to force recovery of funds, and four management recommendations for improvement. So for us to, for four consecutive years, be perfect is, we believe, quite an achievement, unless due to my personal contributions, but mostly to the fine staff that we have. As you know, I've been working in several other districts here recently, and it's just reminded me how great our office staff is. And I'm very pleased tonight that we have an opportunity to recognize them and all that they've done to make this possible. First, I'd like to introduce our assistant treasurer, Norm Funk. Norm's responsible for all of our daily operations and receives a good deal of the credit for this award. And next, we have Becky Beeter. Becky is one of our three payroll specialists and has recently assumed primary lead responsibilities for processing the Richmond Heights payroll in addition to the Mentor payroll. Unable to be with us this evening is Glenn Dean Epperson. Glenn Dean's also a member of our payroll department, primarily responsible for employee benefits, and came to us from an internal promotion in food service to a different world in our building, and it's been a wonderful addition. Next, we have Cindy Furman. Cindy is responsible for a lot of our records management, helping us comply with record retention schedules and archive records and electronically image records for disposable Next, we have Nancy Leonard. Nancy's responsible for all accounts receivable, cash management activities, and a little bit of everything else. Nancy's been with us a long time, and I always tease her. She lived very difficult times when we went through our fiscal crisis, when we didn't know if we had enough money to meet payroll or not, and would always be concerned, is there enough cash? Is there enough cash? And now I told her we're in severe financial distress again because we dipped below $50 million in cash reserves. So Nancy, thank you for all you do. Barb Livengood. Barb's responsible for all student activity management in the district and is a resource to every building and the principal and designated person to help ensure monies are processed correctly and that we can support the student programs that are in each building. Also unable to be with us this evening is Jackie Locke. Jackie is the administrative assistant to me, probably the hardest job in this building, but does a wonderful job of ensuring minutes are processed, procedures are followed, and coordinates a lot of the activities for the rest of us, so we very much value her contributions. Next with us this evening is Rita McNeely. Rita is, I believe, our newest member to the office, joined us in Accounts Payable, is one of the two people that takes the lead in the processing of payments, and this is one of the most significant challenges of dotting i's and crossing t's as it relates to an audit process, so we very much appreciate her efforts. Unable to be with us tonight is Linda Sedmak. Linda is a colleague of Rita's and also responsible for processing Accounts Payable and takes the lead in a lot of the routine monthly payments, whether it's utilities or other reoccurring expenses, and has been a valued member of the office for quite a number of years. Next, Debbie Wallin. Debbie is responsible for fiscal grants management. We receive about $8 million a year in state and federal grants. If something has a dollar sign in front of it, that's Debbie. If it doesn't, then that's our instructional leaders throughout the district. And just starting this month, Debbie's also taking the lead in supporting the Richmond Heights schools. They've contracted with us for their fiscal grants management needs. Next is Judy Willett. Judy's the supervisor for Accounts Payable and takes the lead in helping manage the account status of our various budget categories, the appropriation modifications that we approve every month, is primarily the work of Judy to ensure we're supporting the needs of the district as events unfold throughout the year, and keeps, again, a lot of i's dotted and t's crossed. Also is kind of becoming one of our accounting experts back and supporting the back half of the office, so thank you, Judy. Finally tonight, unable to be with us is Diane Williams. Diane's the supervisor of the payroll department. She has a responsibility for paying over 1,000 of our employees every, twice a month, and also is the backup and support to Becky Beeter as we're processing the Richmond Heights School District. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of regulatory and compliance issues related to payroll, but most important, regardless of calamity days or no power or broken computers, people want to get paid. And Diane's always risen to the challenge to keep us on cycle regardless of the challenges we face, and has been an important member of our staff. So thank you for the opportunity to recognize our staff. They're wonderful people, and they deserve all the credit for these perfect audits.
Well said, Mr. Wilson. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. Dan talked about long years of service. In my long years of service and the number of audits that I went through where I've worked, it's partly about the man on the top or the woman on the top. It's all about the staff doing everything correct, right, conscientiously, balancing the numbers, and doing due diligence every day, not just at the end when the audit's coming, you have to be prepared. Don't you all agree with that? So thank you very much. I totally understand the dedication that's required. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I also wanted to add, you know, we hear a lot about Cardinal pride in the district, and we think about our athletic teams and our students that have so much talent, but this is another example of Cardinal pride right here in our office. Thank you again for your contribution. Great job. Thank you, Dan.
Madam President, members of the board, I have asked Mr. Porter and Mrs. Bonnus to update you on the new middle school structure.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson. Tonight, Mrs. Bonnus and I want to share a summary of the highlights of some middle school changes for next year. For about four years, we've had ongoing dialogue on how we can instill more middle school practices into our three schools. When 2.5 started three years ago, it gave us options for intervention, study structures, and ways for students to feel connected. As we learned more and researched, we all agreed it was time to change some additional things. In negotiations, we agreed to the formal development of a committee. For over 10 months, an expanded committee allowed many voices into the conversation. After research and prioritizing, recommendations were made to a smaller group of six teachers and six administrators who had formalized these plans. Teachers prioritized a return to teaming practices, expansion of English Language Arts and Math to double blocks on all levels, a relocation of 2.5 to the end of the day, and taking intervention out of the 2.5 period. Administrators shared the concern about intervention remaining in 2.5, and we agreed with the value of teaming. Administrators also prioritized the need for more elective options. So what resulted? First, there's a three-year plan to refocus on teaming. There are currently certain natural barriers, like shifting enrollment, licensure restrictions, and some grade level crossover, but we do have teaming pilots going in all three buildings. There will be some naturally occurring changes expected over the next few years that should open up more opportunities to connect teachers into teams of two, three, four, or more. One thing we agreed on about teaming was a common definition that reflects how teaming has even more components than it would have in its definition 10 or 15 years ago. As you can read here, we see it as collaboration with teachers, sharing the same students for the purposes of making data-driven decisions, flexibility with grouping in classes, interdisciplinary planning, developing interventions, differentiation, project-based learning, and meeting the affective needs of middle school students. That's a handful. Our collective committee recognizes the value of every one of these features. We would also change the 2.5 period, which is currently between second and third period, to 8.5 next year. An extensive surveying of our parents, our students, and staff helped guide many changes. By removing intervention from 2.5, which we all agreed was not ideally placed there, we could meet the affective needs of all middle schoolers by providing choice activities for all of these students. We also recognized the need for better communication with parents about 8.5 and their own children's choices. And we agreed to commit to 20% of the days addressing essential advisory topics such as olveous, digital citizenship, and the Start Talking Anti-Drug Program. So those were the universal 8.5 changes, but the building-level teams would have the autonomy to decide certain things for themselves, such as cap numbers for the choice activities so they don't get too crowded, improved choices for teachers, how the advisory sessions are structured during the year, what other staff in the buildings may be able to help out, and any other advisory topics that the building feels would be essential to add. So it's logical now to ask, where does the intervention go? Instead of a second block of just Language Arts for all sixth graders, we shifted the focus to what our data had shown. The students struggling most in value-added gains were those Tier 2 and Tier 3 learners who demonstrated sizable reading or math gaps. Now those students would receive a double block of either English Language Arts or Math on all three grade levels. In addition, that extra period would be a full 45 minutes, would be taught, I'm sorry, would be taught directly by one of the co-teachers from that subject class, and would be limited to seven or fewer students for an ideal learning environment. In our existing 2.5 period, students receiving intervention using the Alex or SOAR online programs or have been using those as the primary delivery system. In our improved model, the teacher would lead the intervention in the class period with the online programs as supplements. If a student qualifies for intervention, there would be no opt-out for that student. They would have one less elective, but it is incumbent on us to close the reading or math gaps. About 10 to 12% of students would be in this arrangement. And now for some of the specific grade-level course adjustments, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Bonnus for a few minutes.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mrs., Mr. Wilson, I am excited to present the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curriculum changes that were agreed upon by the Middle School Change Committee. As Mr. Porter previously discussed, the committee felt the intervention period, which is currently embedded in 2.5, needed to be extended to a full class period. As a result of this change, we were able to increase the number of elective options for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The majority of the middle school curriculum changes occur in the sixth grade. Upon review of OAA testing data, the committee decided to retire the sixth-grade double block that was required for all students and instead provide the double block for students who needed intensive intervention. This permitted us to increase the number of student elective choices and enable us to redirect staffing to provide targeted, small-group intervention for at-risk students. Three new sixth-grade elective courses are in the process of being developed. These include Health, Art Foundations, and Robotics and Design. Current research states that middle school students are at a critical stage of development in terms of receiving health education to learn how to maintain and improve their mental, physical, emotional, and sexual health. In middle school health classes, students gain the knowledge and skills to make healthy choices throughout high school and beyond. Currently, we only offer Health in seventh grade at the middle school level. The committee and Health and PE department recommended the addition of a Health course in sixth grade opposite of physical education. This semester course will be developed using the national health standards. The Semester of Art that was paired with PE was moved opposite of exploratory music, and it is now called Exploratory Art. Additionally, a new full-year art elective called Art Foundations will be offered to students next fall. Art Foundations is an expanded course designed for students to explore and experience creative expression, critical evaluation, greater self-awareness, and appreciation for visual art on a daily basis. Students will be introduced to Art Foundations, including the elements and principles of design. This course develops students' drawing and designing skills, as well as an introduction to sculpture and art history. A new sixth-grade applied tech course called Robotics and Design is also under development. This hands-on, project-based course embeds two units from the Project Lead the Way Middle School Gateway Program, which enables students to build strong foundation for further STEM learning in high school and beyond. Using the same advanced software and tools as those used by the world's leading companies, students will learn how to apply math, science, technology, and engineering to their everyday lives. The Design and Modeling Unit will allow students to apply the design process to solve problems and understand the influence of creativity and innovation in their lives. The Automation and Robotics Unit enables students to trace the history, development, and influence of automation and robotics as they learn about mechanical systems, energy transfer, machine automation, and computer control systems. Students will use the VEX Robotics platform to design, build, and program real-world objects such as traffic lights, toll booths, and robotic arms. The new Health, Art Foundation, and Robotics and Design courses are at the beginning stages of development and will be completed by fall. The Middle School Change Committee also recommended changes in the required seventh-grade trimester courses, otherwise known as the Wheel. These courses included a trimester rotation of Family Consumer Science, Content Area Reading, and Applied Tech. The Content Area Reading course was no longer needed because content literacy standards are now embedded in Ohio's new learning standards for Science and Social Studies. The Family Consumer Science course and Applied Tech course continue to be paired but are now each extended to a semester elective. Because the trimester courses were no longer required, for the first time, it gives students the option to take both music and art in seventh grade. Current eighth-grade students are able to choose two electives, so there wasn't a need to change any required courses to make room for the addition of the new eighth-grade intervention period. There was, however, a need to offer a Fine Arts elective that did not require prerequisites for eighth grade. Instead of adding an additional course, eighth-grade students will be able to take the seventh-grade music and art course. This provides additional elective options for students and will help eighth-grade students meet Ohio's middle school fine arts requirements. In conclusion, the middle school curriculum changes provide greater options for students as well as additional intervention time for students on all grade levels who need it.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnus. And then, just in terms of future plans, as you can imagine, we're still on. As you can imagine, there's a lot of work still to do between now and June. Our next immediate steps are to determine who needs the intervention, to revisit the criteria for honors classes, honors class qualifications, to update program of studies, including revisions, to look for any and all teaming opportunities for the 14, 15 school year, to communicate these changes to all of our stakeholders, and to provide any immediate professional development that's needed. So once we make these initial changes, our work is still not done. Long-term, we want to look for more teaming opportunities in the future. We will study world languages and their role in middle school education. We will study further changes that are needed for applied tech or integrated tech programs. We would rewrite honors curriculum, reevaluate our 8.5 program, the existing Read 180 course, and any of the other changes that are outlined tonight. So I know that's a lot, but any questions at this time?
Oh, Mr. Porter and Mrs. Bonnus, and your committee, it's like working a Rubik's Q to put all those variables together. I think you've done a splendid job.
There are a lot of people that spend a lot of time on that. They're well beyond this room.
Yeah, it's really a very, very nice job.
Thank you very much. Thanks to the committee that put all that time in, not just, not just the administration, but the middle school teachers that were part of that, too. So I know you got a lot done with that, so thank you. Madam President, members of the board, at this time, I'm recommending approval of agenda items C1 related to certified staff and C2 through C5, all related to human resource
Motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Any new business? No? Legislative report? Mr. Tuttle?
Well, a number of the items are just continuing items that have moved along in the House bills. The last item on the report that I've issued covers House Bill 416, and that's regarding the addition of four calamity days. Tomorrow, there'll be an announcement, I believe, or a release, news release? Is it tomorrow? Kristin? Oh, okay.
I'm here on Thursday.
Okay.
But who knows?
So it could eliminate the need for one makeup day on our side. Otherwise, we will have to make that up.
And we just announced that that would be at the end of the school year because it was too close to President's Day, so for right now, it would be June 2nd. But we are anticipating relief or hoping.
Okay. It's the end of my report.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officer's report and recommendations. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. It's recommended the financial statements for the month of January 2014 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
I have just note very quickly that revenue was as predicted and tracking to last year's performance. This year, to date, expenses are actually tracking at 0.9% more than last year, and we're underspending the budget by about six percentage points at this time, so we're very pleased with our status today.
That's all of that. Thank you. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education ratify the investment transaction listed in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations presented in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
And that completes my items for this evening.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Our second hearing of the public on any subject?
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to speak. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
My name is Elaine Foster, Mina resident. I'm here tonight to speak about the possible land acquisition, the property south of Del Arice, and I'm approaching the board to let you know that I have indeed received many signatures of area residents who are opposed to the land acquisition south of Del Arice. I do have a petition going around. We have over a hundred and twelve signatures thus far. The weather has not been cooperating very well, but we're working through it and carrying on. I do anticipate, a lot of the individuals have voiced that they would like to be a part of speaking on behalf of that land acquisition and behalf of their signatures, and I am going to let them know that the next school board meeting is March 11th, if that's correct. And I'd like to approach the board and find out how best to do that. I can't anticipate how many at this point would like to come, but I have received a lot of interest in people who would like to voice their concerns about that land acquisition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss possible purchase and/or sale of property, compensation of a public official, and potential litigation.
So moved.
Second. Do we anticipate voting on anything at the end? No votes. Okay. Second. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezzling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening.